Counselor Olson is participating by the conference call. Counselor Fennessey, Counselor Bender, Counselor Sweeney, Counselor McDonald, Counselor Mazzolio, Counselor Finsland, Counselor Herrick, Counselor McKenzie, and sadly Counselor Brown is excused.
As we all know, Counselor Brown fought a very hard battle against the disease that he had, and so I'd like to offer, ask for a moment of silence and private prayer, At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to read a plaque that was prepared today for Counselor Brown and especially for his family and people that loved him. Bob was an inspiration to not just this community and county, but for people literally across the world that he made friends with over his life in all the occupations that he had, as well as the, his dear, dear love for precious Lake Superior. And Bob was 76 years old. He had a very rough road the past few months. He spent considerable time at University of Minnesota Hospital and hospice. He came home. The story goes, I talked to his son on the 13th, I believe it was, the day before Lake Superior Day, and I said, "We're hoping he could be here, but hospice would not allow that." So he called me back. He said, "You know what? I'm gonna bring him up there." And so he had breakfast with him in the morning of the Sunday, I think it was the 14th, I can't remember, and he said, "Dad, we're going for a run." Dad said, "Where?" He said, "Barbershop." Bob Brown, if you may or may not remember, started Lake Superior, celebrating Lake Superior Day about 10 or 12 years ago, and it's spread all across Lake Superior in Canada and the United States. So we got there, and Bob was there in a medevan, and he got close enough to hear the speakers, and he had a reception line for probably two and a half hours in the condition he was in, and at that time, much of his bodily functions had resigned, if you will. And, but he fought, he cared more about you than he did himself. He also cared about what was going on in the community and the area, and he had a little laughter about himself, even though he was very difficult for him. So on behalf of the city council, and the county, the city, and the people of Superior, I put together this little, little something here. It's called "Bob Brown, quote, 'Everybody's best friend,' end quote. On behalf of all your best friends that span the globe, we take this moment in time to reflect and pay tribute to your life, a life well-served, a life that focused on others and not self, and a life devoted to leaving this planet in a better and sustainable condition for generations to come. The qualities that you have brought to our earth as the conscience of the environment and in providing leadership on many levels of need through personal dedication is the mark of and the makings of a gentleman, the gentleman we all knew, looked up to, and loved. Bob, your commitment to the community and the ecology of Lake Superior Basin grew from a small celebration to one that is now set aside each year to honor, respect, and celebrate the treasure that spawns two nations, Lake Superior." Quote, "Water is life, and the quality of water determines the quality of life." Bob Brown. Dear friend, may the waves reach up to greet you, may the winds brush softly upon your back, may the Lord be by your side, and may the warm sands of Lake Superior provide comfort for you during your eternal stewardship and protection of the lady we affectionately call Lake Superior. Respectfully and on behalf of the citizens of Superior, Douglas County, and the close friends that you have gathered worldwide, rest in peace. Dated the 6th day of August 2013, Bruce C. Hagan, Mayor and the common councilman." Counselor?
Did you want me to replace him?
I'm sorry.
Well, the mayor asked me if I would say a few words as far as Bob, and of course, I'm always unprepared to say anything and never have anything to say, but I guess I'll quote what I have written for the Rotary Newsletter for this week, and that's "We've Lost a Good Friend," and that's, that's very true. Many of us have known Bob for years. I know Mick and I are both from the, from the North End, or I'm, I'm just outside the North End, and so, and I've known Bob through, first through church, and then through the Democratic Party, then through his involvement with the county board, his involvement with, as being a fellow Rotarian in the Dragon Boat Festival, and finally with city council. And it's, it almost sounds like, when you say something to the effect like, "We're really gonna miss him," it almost sounds, sounds like it's fake or false, but in Bob's case, that really isn't the truth. So, Bob, wherever you are, and I'm sure a lot of people will join me in saying this, we love you. Take care.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Warren, for that good words about Bob. It's extremely difficult for me to sit up here next to this spot that I always sat next to him, next to Bob. Bob Brown, wonderful person. It's gonna be increasingly more difficult as time goes on, knowing that he's not coming back. Many of us certainly lost a great friend, but for me, Superior lost an extraordinary man who gave back much more to this community than he ever, ever took from it. He made such a positive difference in so many people's lives, including mine. It was an honor for me to be considered his friend and to serve on this city council with him. I'm gonna miss him, his kindness, his wisdom, his generosity, and most importantly, his smile.
Yeah, on August 1st, Spear lost a citizen, a family man, a friend, a counselor, and the council, a comrade. I had the opportunity to get to know Bob over two years ago when he was elected to the council. After the first time I met him, it was as if I knew him for years. His character and laughter was a strong point and made you feel comfortable when you first met him, and continued every time you talked with him. I had the opportunity to see Bob for the last time briefly on Lake Superior Day in July during the ceremony. Although ill, Bob still had that laughter that made you feel good. He wanted me to give you a message tonight at council that he is thinking of you and appreciates everything you do. Bob will surely be missed.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a comment or two? If not, we go from somber to celebratory and gracious and thanks. So I'd like to read a proclamation. We have a lady with us tonight who deserves a very high honor as a citizen of the month, and we appreciate the attendance on her behalf. It's a proclamation by Mayor Bruce C. Hagan, "Whereas Lori Clark was at the right place at the right time to save Gary Glass's life, a Vietnam Purple Heart veteran. And whereas a creature of habit, Lori always parks near the Walmart food doors, but on this particular day, she picked a different spot. And whereas Gary Glass was on his way to the VA Hospital in the Twin Cities for surgery to install a defibrillator, a surgery that had been postponed due an April snowstorm. And whereas, as Gary was loading his purchases in his car, he got dizzy and collapsed. Lori Clark was parked right behind him, and whereas she dialed 911 and was at his side in no time, initially he was breathing, but his lips started turning blue. Lori turned to, turned him on his back and started chest compressions and kept on pumping. And whereas, after four minutes, members of the Superior Fire Department, followed by Gold Cross Ambulances, paramedics, were on the scene and took Gary to a central cardiac ICU unit. Lori works for a few floors, Lori works a few floors below the unit. And whereas, two hours later, the fire department called Lori to let her know that Gary had survived. When Lori went to see him and introduced herself, Gary turned his head, barely opening his eyes, and said, "You're pretty." And you are. And whereas, it truly is a tale of two heroes, about 1 in 100 cardiac calls ends up happily. But these two beat the odds. Both heroes hope to keep in touch with each other and encourage everybody to take CPR. Now therefore, I, Bruce C. Hagan, Mayor of the City of Superior, do hereby proclaim Lori Clark as Citizen of the Month for the month of August 2013 in the City of Superior, Wisconsin." Thank you, and we repeat, we appreciate it.
Item 4 is approval of the minutes from the July 16th regular council meeting.
Motion approved. Heard the motion, and second is approved. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 6 is the consent agenda. Counselor Bender is requesting to separate items 6.3 and 6.14, too.
Heard the motion, and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 6.3 is a communication to be received and filed, the Human Resources Committee, from July 15th.
President Bender.
Yes, I would like to send this back to committee due to concerns whether this position is needed, and also that it was evidently advertised and has already been filled even before it was approved. And I know, I'm reading through the packet for tonight's meeting, I know that when Finance Director Vito makes her presentation a little bit later, there is going to be something said about, something said about some changes in both personnel and in wages. So because of that, I think that this needs to go back to, to the Human Resources Committee for another look. So that's a motion that I will make at this time.
Second motion. Is there a second? Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 6.14, 2, is the Finance Committee recommendations to receive and file the 2012 audit report.
Right, and I don't have any problem with receiving and auditing, or receiving and filing the auditor's report, but there were just a number of things in here, and at the Finance Committee, we didn't see a copy of the report. We only heard the presentation. Of course, the presentation was good, and I asked at the end, "What shape is the city in?" And I think the answer was, was pretty good, but maybe I could ask Finance Director Vito if, if she could just answer a couple of questions. I'm not looking at the exhaustive one, I'm just looking at the Cliff Notes. And that's, and I'm, I'm familiar with some of these, but I thought that they should be brought forward. The first one is about, oh, it's on page 6, it's a segregation of duties one, and the effect could be misstated finance, finance statements, and is, is the segregation of duties just because of the lack, lack of more personnel?
Correct.
Okay, so, and I know that's often, often the case in, in many types of institutions, too. So, okay, and then, looking on page 7, now, the material adjustments, and it says that there were numerous material, numerous adjustments made to journal entries, and what's the reason for that, for those adjustments made to the journal entries?
Good question, Counselor, and those are always, those happen every year, every year that I've been here, we've got, they're called adjusting journal entries, and what they are is, the auditors come to do their fieldwork usually in the first two weeks of April, and we close, our year closes on December 31st of each year, but a lot of our transactions aren't finalized, bills aren't sent out, or payments that are owed us are not received for, sometimes we're still running transactions in March. And then, what we have to do is, between Dan and I, we go, we go through all the financial records, and we have to do adjusting journal entries to make sure that the statements are as accurate as, as we can make them. So then, when the auditors come in, they go through all of their tests and compliance reviews, and go through quite a bit of our records, and every single year, they will find things that have to be adjusted. So that's what those are. I can tell you, over the years, they've gone down substantially. We used to have many, many more, and I think, I don't know that the auditors made that comment this year, but they've said our, our books are probably in better order than any of the previous years that they've had when they've been doing the audit, just because we've got things like the grants are, are accounted for, the fixed assets, and so we've got a, I think, a much better routine for getting those records in order.
I believe they did make a statement similar to that. And then on, on page 8, under both appropriations and fund deficits, one of the things that it says under appropriations is budget categories had expenditures in excess of amounts budgeted. And then under fund deficits, it also had said a number of funds had deficits as of December 31.
Correct, yeah.
So what can we do about that, besides print more money?
Yeah, I wish. It's, that's another thing that, at the end of each year, we will always have some funds that are in deficit, some funds that have surpluses, and that's another thing that's gone in the, a better direction as well. If I think back four, five, six years ago, well, even going back to the, oh, I don't know, 2002 or 2003, I don't know, actually, Counselor Fennessey, you may have been on the council at that time, but we had our health insurance fund that had a deficit of $1.5 million because we didn't get rate increases approved for that, yet the claims would go where the claims would go. So that was one fund that, I mean, huge deficit for that fund. The other, if I recall, the largest deficit that we had at the end of the year 2012 was in the fund where we're collecting all of our flooding costs, and it was simply that the FEMA draw had not been done, but the cost had been incurred, so the draw was done probably in January, and then that fund was made very whole. In fact, and some of the, excuse me, some of the deficit, they, the auditors report everything, and I remember one of the deficit funds was like $25. So it's, it's much better than in, in previous years, and I guess my point is that there will always be some funds that fall behind. In fact, it's one of the areas that we need to get caught up on with the 2014 budget, it's a police department grant fund, and over the years, we haven't been keeping up with the matches that are required for those police grants, and so over the years, it's accumulated a deficit, and if, you know, it, it needs some attention. So there will always be something that's over, but the vast majority of the funds are, have surpluses.
Well, thank you, thank you for those explanations of that. And am I correct in saying this is what you call an exhaustive audit?
I'd call it a clean audit. That's the technical, and that's the technical term they use, a clean audit.
Well, that's good.
In fact, as long, as long, oh, it's always exhaustive, but as long as we're on the subject, and this is, is a report that goes through the Finance Committee, and then it's on the consent agenda here, so unless the counselors attend the Finance Committee, you're not gonna hear when, when the partner of the auditing firm comes and goes through the whole document and does all the highlights. So if it's appropriate, I would be happy to give you some highlights right now.
Well, no, I left that one at home. I only brought the Cliff Notes.
I did, too.
Well, no, 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 please, please, if you want to.
Okay, all right. As I just mentioned, we got what's called a clean opinion, it's also called unqualified, and that's good. And so when, when the auditors come in and they do an audit, they're not so much telling us that our finances are good or bad, but they're telling us if this document that you get is accurate. So that's what they're doing. My goal is that I never want to run a deficit in the general fund, because that's what the bond rating agencies always look at when we go and issue money, they wanna know what's happening in your general fund. And so I think, since I've been here, there may have been two years that we did run a deficit, but it hasn't been recently, and it wasn't the case in 2012. And then we also keep an eye on all the individual departments, especially within the general fund, to make sure they're not going over budget, because what that does is it puts pressure on the other departments to make up for that, and so that was actually better than previous years as well. And then we wanna make sure that our assets increase from year to year instead of the opposite, and that was the case in 2012. I believe our, what's called our net assets went up just over $4 million. We want to have a general fund reserve balance that's sufficient enough in case we have an emergency, and that, that reserve balance is, the bond rating agencies, I think, would refer to that as excellent. We look at our debt, make sure it's manageable, not excessive, and the debt that we're allowed to issue is 5% of our equalized value, and we're far below that. We're probably at about the 50% mark of what we could issue for debt. That doesn't mean that because we've got all that capacity that the council wants to go out and issue a lot of debt because that'll affect your tax levy. And we look at the enterprise funds, the sewer, stormwater, golf course, landfill, and especially with the sewer fund, we don't wanna see deficits in that fund because we got in a little trouble with that a couple of years ago, where the rate increases weren't sufficient enough to cover the, the debt to be repaid per the debt, the bond covenants. And they do look at that, and they made us do a one-time transfer out of our general fund to the sewer fund, and then back in the following year, back into the general fund when the sewer fund did have enough money to pay that back. The other item, and you've already brought it up, Counselor Bender, looking at funds that have deficits, and so we've, we're, we're working on those. And then the last thing I look at is, and the auditors as well, look at any internal control issues or what they call material weaknesses, and those are the things that they bring up when we don't have enough people that you can properly segregate, you're only going to do taking in cash, you're only going to do paying bills, et cetera. We, I think we've got, one, two, three, four, four-point something people, including Dan and I, in our department, so there's just not the ability to segregate that. So those are, those are my comments to summarize.
And I'll, one last thing that I would say, is looking at the last four pages of the brief explanation, it does show that for the unadjusted, unadjusted general fund, that there was no deficit, there was actually like 1.1 million.
Yes, and that's, yep, and part of that, I would say about half of that, is that transfer back from the wastewater, it was something like $508,000, I believe. And then the balance, it was actually a, kind of an unusual year that the departments, mostly public works, but also police department, returned. I think police department returned almost $100,000, public works, 350, that's pretty typical for public works, and revenue was right on, and, and a few other departments, city attorney, city clerk, finance return, assessor returned some balances as well. So it was a good year.
Thank you. I think Counselor Sweeney has a question.
Counselor.
Thank you. I, I didn't bring this with me, but I do have a question, I'm gonna try and remember. I was looking at the financials, too, and I, I thought I noted that if employees have accumulated sick pay, they can then, when they retire or leave, but that's not shown as a liability on the books. Is that, and if that's, if my statement is correct, I believe it to be correct, what is that figure that we are potentially liable for that is not shown on our financials?
That's something that it's called the GASB Government Accounting Standards Board is working on.
Right.
And they require, are you, you familiar with that?
I am.
Does that, okay, probably, yeah. And what we do have, it's called other post-employment benefits, and every year, they require us to have, or every other year, they require an actuarial study done on that to determine what is our outstanding liability and how much have we been funding that. And so what, it gets a little strange, but some years ago, probably four, five, six years ago, the city council took $2 million and started to pre-fund that, but because we didn't put it in a trust fund, they can't count that because they say that's still accessible. If the council wanted to pull that money out, you can. So that's why they say that none of it's funded, when in actuality, we put that, we pre-funded the $2 million, and then every year, as part of our budget, in each division's budget, we transfer more money in there to fund those liabilities. Now, I don't know the number off the top of my head, though.
Just to follow up then, was, is there a footnote in the financials that tells me that?
I think there is, yeah.
I, I look for it.
There is.
Okay.
Look for, it's acronym is OPEB.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Longer the footnote there, and then, okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mayor.
Yes, Counselor.
Couple of questions for Jean. With what you just said, Jean, are, is the city in a position that we would have unfunded liability?
What the, what the actuarial report and what the audit report will show you is that we've actually contributed, I think, slightly more, they, they come back and they say, "Here's what you have to do on an annual basis." It's another acronym called ARC, Annual Required Contribution. And the, and the contribution that we're making is higher, not by much, but it's slightly higher than what we're required to do. I also think, going back to Counselor Sweeney's question, I think there is a GASB ruling that's in, at least in discussion, where all municipal entities will have to start showing that, that liability, instead of letting it just be down the road and, and paying for it then. So we're, we're in the same boat as everybody else, and we'll have to implement that along with everybody else.
Okay, and then one other question. With this clean and unqualified audit, are you saying that we can have certain departments run on the deficit, but as long as our general fund comes clean, that this is good enough for a clean and unqualified audit?
Well, what the, the answer is yes, and the auditors, I'm sure you know this, they don't just audit the general fund, they audit every single fund, and I think it would be highly unlikely that they would go to a, a city and find some city that has absolutely no funds with a deficit, that, I'm sure they exist, but I don't think that's anything that alarms them, because they ask us, "What are your plans for those deficits?" And they just wanna make sure that, that we do have something in the works to address it, that we're not just going to let deficits continue to accumulate. So, yeah, that's, that isn't something that would cause them to give us what's called a qualified opinion. When they would give us a qualified opinion, it would be that they don't trust that the financial statements are accurate, but they don't necessarily come and grade us on, you know, if we have a deficit in one place or the other.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments?
I'll make a motion to.
Could I just ask one more question? Okay. Okay? When they do the audit, do they, when they go through it, do they take a certain section or a certain department unbeknownst to you, or the, and deal in a fraud investigation through, or do we have to request that? But is that part of two or three items they may pick for fraud?
What they do is, they, they don't come in here with the intention of doing a fraud audit, but if they see something when they're testing, if they took, we would never know what they're going to test, and so the, the day before, or the Friday before they come to do the audit, they will give us a list of checks to pull, and so we'll go into our vendor files, pull probably hundreds of checks, and then the same thing for receivables, and then they look at our grants, and they test compliance, and they, they look at our capital projects, and if it's got a federal grant or a state grant, they'll look at those grants, and then they have certain procedures that they'll test. Then, if they find something that looks suspicious, then they have then they have steps where they would increase their testing. But if we were to want an actual fraud audit, that's a different thing that we would have to request on the side.
But did they ever go in this investigation or audit, go to the next step?
I have not seen them do that.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second? I'm sorry. Councilor, all in favor signify by saying aye. Close. Carrie?
Item seven is by department head. I just want to double check. Can you hear out there well enough, or is it pretty quiet? I can turn the speakers out.
I can't. No.
Let me just try to turn them on. Does that sound better?
Yeah.
Okay. Item 7.1, Finance Director Vito is Providing Introductory 2014 General Fund Budget Process Comments.
We're presenting this preliminary general fund budget to the council after some fairly exhaustive, lengthy meetings with department heads and others in the administration with regard to anticipation for the 2014 budget. As will be noted as we move through this, the 2014 budget will be fairly stable and uneventful, if you will, with regard to what we're proposing as well as the cost of doing business. The timeline will be provided here in a bit. But the, what we have before you is, as you know, we're under severe restrictions with regard to state levy limits and reduced shared revenue, which has been in place, reduction since, I think, 2002, as well as payment for municipal services, which has been flat. And in fact, we're receiving half of what we should receive for services to state properties and such things as transit aids. But there will be a little uptick in 2014 for that. So, all in all, with the flat, flat revenue since the recession began in 2008, we're no different than other communities. But I think we're doing a pretty good job with handling the restrictions that we have that we have no control over. I'd like to have Jean talk about the budget timeline.
Thanks, Mayor. This is informational for the councilors, because we have some new councilors, we have some returning councilors. And, and just a refresher for the council members that have been around and gone through the budget process for, for the last few years. I hope this isn't a problem like last. Okay. What we've done is we've put together our timeline of the, how we would like to move through the next few months. The end result is being the first Monday in December, we have a tax roll that's due to Douglas County, so we can get the tax bills run, printed, delivered. And so, what we do is we have an ordinance that stipulates that the mayor has to submit his executive budget to the council by, by or on the first meeting in September. And we, we will have the, the first budget session will be on August 20th. And so, what we're doing tonight is really just an informational kind of introduction to what will be starting on August 20th. And as the slide says, there's no action required. But as we, as we go through these slides, it may jog your thought process on some questions that you may have. And if you do, if you can let us know now, then we can do our best to be prepared on August 20th when we start the official discussions. And then, later on in the agenda, we have a request for an ordinance change to go back to a one-year budget instead of a two-year budget. And I can explain that more at that part of the agenda. So, what we have scheduled are three meetings, if needed, August 20th, September 3rd, and September 17th. And we can add as many more meetings as the council wishes. These, we've just picked out the council meeting nights. And if we have to call more meetings on other days of the week, that would be up to the council, if you feel like you need more information. And then, you'll see the last scheduled meeting is September 17th. If we have to, we can really kind of move into the last two weeks of September as well. But what we really want to do is keep with our past tradition on having the public hearing on the budget on the second meeting in October. And just for clarification, this is a statutory guideline. We go under chapter 65.9. And in order to have the public hearing, the council has to vote on a budget. So, then, the public can make their comments on, on a budget that the council is recommending. So, that's why the order of the public hearing comes after budget adoption. At the, during the public hearing or after that, the council can change the budget. But at that time, it would require a supermajority vote. So, up until then, it's a simple majority. So, public hearing on October 15th. And again, as a reminder, we've got a certain number of days that we can't hold the public, public hearing before. We have like a 15-day minimum period of time after the council adopts a budget before we can hold a public hearing. And then, we look at spreading the tax levy on the first meeting in November. And we already actually have a very good idea of what our levy dollars will be. We'll touch on levy limits a little later. But we, we can't levy for anything other than the levy of the prior year plus any increase for debt. And December 2nd, tax roll due to the county, as I mentioned.
As seeing the initial observations for 2014 and 2015 are very different financial pictures. That's why we're recommending to move from a two-year budget back to one for flexibility with the budget. Being that 2014 looks very stable, very, very stable. 2015 could present problems due to the continuation of lost revenue, revenue that hasn't, has not been, that has not kept up with regard to budget and cost of doing business. And the state of Wisconsin is playing a larger role in our local budget, as we've all witnessed. The, the cutbacks, if you will, and I'll call them cutbacks, through freezes that have not been able to adjust or grow is causing municipalities and counties across the state of Wisconsin to, to have to deal with inflexibility as well as the inflexibility of having to cause reduction in services and adjusting this and adjusting that. Fortunately, thanks to the council and finance department and all the departments, we have not had to do that. But what we've had to do is reduce the staffing by 10% since 2008, I believe.
It's earlier than that.
Earlier than that.
2004.
And adjust different things through modernization and probably maybe not having response time as quickly as we'd like for community services, not, not talking about police or fire, but things that people are requiring. And it just gets on a backlog because of service rendering, a lack of opportunity and timings. The many of the budget areas have fallen behind. Jean touched on finance, for instance. One of the recommendations from the auditor was that we don't have enough staffing with regard into finance and internal audit and even the position that Nancy Brown had with regard to having the proper checks and balances within our financial operations. And that, that's been witnessed, I think, more than once by the auditors. It's a, it's a note of concern. Other areas, we've had very severe discussions as late as, or early in, as late as last year with regard to the operations in the fire department and perhaps a little bit in the police department. I'll give you an example in several areas. Park and Recreation had 28 employees in that division. Tell about, well, prior to probably 2005. They now have nine. And they're taking care of 46 square miles of parks and rights of way and so forth, and trees, and whatever people want in the neighborhoods with, with very reduced numbers of opportunities and staffing. The fire department, if it had not been for the SAFER grant, we'd probably have a very, too much of a very deep discussion with regard to the sustainability of operations. And fortunately, the SAFER grant has allowed us to move ahead in proper fashion without having to talk about some of the draconian measures that we had before its last fall. So, those are just a couple of examples. As I said, there's no increased revenue. The tax base has been flat since about 2008, when the, when the decline in the economy. We're not, we're not singled out on this. It's been a national, and probably an international problem with regard to the factors and actions across the nation that have caused the economy to slip as it has over, since 2001 and then back in 2008, when there's a little bit of relief between those two points in time. And the projected deficits for 2015 and beyond is another issue that we'll have to take up sooner than later in 2014, to adjust those so that we can rise rather than fall. So, I'll turn this, the general fund revenue projections back over to Jean.
I put these charts up, graphs up, just as an FYI, to give a visual of what our revenue looks like. And then, there's another one for expense. And these are actual numbers from 2012. And I guess my point is, just to point out, the two large areas, the blue or gray, that is our, our tax money. And then, the greenish color, our, the majority of that is state funding, a little bit of federal funding in there. But that's our, that's our shared revenue and our road aid that we get. And between the two of them, they make up something like 88% of our revenue. So, and both of those revenue sources are, they're challenged. We've had the levy limits for quite a number of years now. And then, as Mayor has mentioned, shared revenue has, it hasn't kept up. It hasn't even stayed the same. But it's been cut at least two times, but I think three times over the course of the 2000s, and most recently in 2012. The rest of the, the revenue sources are all fairly small, fines, penalties, some public charges for service and interest income. So, there really isn't a lot that those areas can do. It's really these two large areas that we rely on so heavily. This is the expenditure side. The orange is public safety. Green is public works. And then, the darker gray, 2.9 million, that's all the, what are called the general government departments. That's the city council, mayor, clerk, human resources, finance, assessor, attorney, and planning department. And the colors look a little different up here. 1,907, that's our debt service. And 1,372, that is the transfer that we make to the library fund. And that also includes Parks and Recreation. And, oh, okay. It's, you can't see the number up there. It's the yellow slice. That's 1.4 million, and that's transfers to other funds. For example, we do a transfer from our general fund to the, our capital improvement program. We do transfer to the landfill. So, that's where, that's where those dollar amounts are.
Jean capsulized this, and I'll just reiterate. The shared revenue has stayed at the same level since 2012. SAFER grant ends in 2014. I'm assuming that means that 2015, 2015. The tax levy, levy increase, we can only raise the levy for debt service if we want to increase the debt, for whatever reason. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense unless it becomes a critical necessity. Levy increase for inflation operations is not allowed without a referendum. By that, I mean, we cannot reuse the levy for general purposes and services unless we go to a referendum and the, and the populace decides that it's a wise thing to do and vote for. Other sources continually dreaming flat. The expenditures for 2014, as you all know, we've all, in any organization, salaries, wages, and benefits drives most budgets. I know when I worked at the state, it was almost, I think it was 88 or 90%. So, increased budget and, an increased budget without increased revenues. When I say increased budget, I mean, cost of doing business without increased revenues puts the pressure on everything we could provide and do. Health insurance rates, fortunately, are the same as 2013, which is, I want to thank Jean and, and the Health and Welfare Committee. Same staffing levels as 2013 to 2014. I want to talk a little bit about that in a little bit. And the police and fire grant positions, we go from year to year at the, with the expertise of the chief and his people, and Chief, Chief Ljesz and Chief Panger with regard to securing these grants, grants to keep the staffing levels and services up. And they've done an excellent job at that. Operating costs, we have, like everybody else, our own home, we have inflationary increases. Gasoline and fuel costs is probably $900,000 a year by itself out of a $27 million budget. And capital items, we have had some restraints, and we've had some items reinstated at a level necessary to provide the services. The animal shelter, as, as you know, the animal shelter has assumed one half, one half year and one half current, or new year. Those costs have gone up a little bit. I believe $120,000.
We have a contract now that's $120,000.
$120,000 now is less than that. Transfers, we did a one-time transfer to what we, what we refer to as Neighborhood Improvement Fund. That's for raising buildings in neighborhoods. As you may recall, some meetings ago, I think you transferred $150,000 into the Neighborhood Improvement Fund, because we have so many structures in the community that should not be left as they are in fallow and, and dangerous conditions. The Capital Improvement Project Program, I should say, transfer eliminated for 2014. We're looking at $800,000 in TID 9, which is the Grand Central Site. And we're going to be looking at, not nine.
Winter Street.
Winter Street. We may be transferring money out of that. We'll talk about that later with regard to the distressed TID 11. Our debt service increase over 2013 into 14 will be about $35,000. I'll let Jean cover this.
This shows that we've been hanging around the, kind of the $27 million mark for many, many years. And going from 2008 to 14, six years of increases, and the total increase is $596,000. And that's, of course, every, every bit of this is driven by the amount of revenue that we collect. And because revenue has been so flat, that's where our expense side of the budget goes. But just for some history, a figure like $596,000 prior to 2004, I would say, that would be a typical annual increase. We'd, we'd increase 2%, sometimes 3%. So, what this, what this shows is that we've increased our budget 0.37% annually over the years. And as Mayor Hagan mentioned, over many years, 10% of the staffing was cut. And part of the, part of the things we're trying to get back into the budget are things that were cut, somewhat one-time things. But things like the smaller capital items that don't qualify to be in the larger CIP. But there are things like copiers, and I know squad cars, well, wait, never mind squad cars, they are in the CIP. wait, never mind squad cars, they are in the CIP. Copiers, improvements that, smaller improvements, building improvements that aren't anything major, vests in the police department, gear in the fire department. They were cut because we thought, well, in a couple of years, it'll get better, and we can get these things back in the budget. Well, six years later, we have to get them back in now, so. But those were the easier things to cut instead of reducing more staffing. And so tough decisions were made, and I think we're entering into the 2015 year where I've shared with the mayor, I don't know where else to cut. It would truly be at the point of looking at services and what has to go, because we've got, we've got some large deficits coming up in 2015, assuming levy limits continue and shared revenue remains flat. This is, the arrow shows inflation, and going back to 2008, if we were allowed to increase our budget, what the CPI did for those number of years, it averaged one point seven percent a year, and during this year, we would have been looking at a budget just over twenty-nine million. So that shows you that we've, we've lost over two million dollars in what I'll refer to as the base of our budget. It's, we've just cut every single line item, I think, has been, has been touched. Projected deficits, the easy, the easy year will be 2014. We do have that balanced, and I'd say two main reasons. The continuation of the SAFER grant in the fire department is actually, it funds six positions, three of which were already in the general fund operating budget, and they were, they were either not filled or eliminated almost a year ago, and we had the budget balanced, and when that SAFER grant came in, it generated a contingency that was used for the Neighborhood Improvement Fund, among other things. But I'll be getting together with Steve to talk about the end date of the SAFER. I know it's a two-year grant, and there'll probably be some overlap into 2015. I don't know that it's the full year of 2015. But anyway, we, we were able to balance 2014 for one other reason, that, an issue that we're going to bring forward to the council relates to tax increment district number nine, that's our winter street district. And some years ago, we issued debt to do any number of improvements in that district. And in talking to Jason a couple of weeks ago, he said that they're finishing up on, I think, some roadwork there, and he doesn't really have any more project, any more infrastructure costs that remain in that district, and there's eight hundred thousand dollars left of bond proceeds that we have to do something with. We have to put those bond proceeds into a different tax-exempt use for debt. And so our recommendation is going to be that we put that money in our capital improvement program and use it for, whether it's a road project, or equipment, or some project within the CIP. So back to my point of why 2014 was easier to balance, it's because we were able to reduce our annual transfer from our general fund by just under six hundred thousand dollars because we have this eight hundred thousand dollar piece going into that CIP. That's a one-time assistance that we have to return back to funding our CIP from our general fund in 2015, or the CIP will start to run out of money. So what we, the budget that we'll bring forward on the twentieth, as of today, it's got a contingency of, I think it's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And how do we go from that to a 2015 budget that looks like a one point three million dollar deficit? It's mainly that transfer to the general fund, and it is inflation. If we, if we look at two and a half percent increases for the majority of our operating costs, things like fuel and utilities and things that will go, will continue rising, that's probably a, close to a six hundred thousand dollar piece change in the budget. There's something else. The SAFER grant, but again, I need to clarify with Chief Panger on that. And then, of course, as I mentioned earlier, this is all based on the assumption that we still have levy limits, and that we get no more money from the state. They have bumped it up a little bit in 2015 for some of our road aid, but not for shared revenue, they're holding shared revenue the same. Where we go in 2016 is certainly not known by me at this point, but what we do, when our projections are done, we work with the information that we have today. And so the differences between 2015 and 16, and then again in 2017, they're simply inflationary And those are big numbers.
I learned today that, I don't know what it is, but apparently the governor's office is drafting legislation that pertains to municipalities for the fall session. I don't know what that is, and I hope it's not something that detracts from our ability to operate as we do right now. I want to concentrate on the second bullet, attracting, retaining employees. We're having a problem with that. We have just lost, I think, three in public works to the private sector, and a mechanic to the private sector, because we're not competitive with regard to what's out there. What's out, what is even more interesting is in getting seasonal employees. Jeff can respond to this better than I, but they have had the dickens of a time, actually Kami could probably respond, getting seasonal employees. And the question is, why? Normally, we find kids coming out of high school, or people home from college, or people that really need work that can't find it, coming to work for us for the season, if you will, an elongated season, and patching streets and so forth. Right now, we don't have enough seasonal employees to man the trucks. And that's a very interesting dilemma in the fact that, why is that? We can't put our finger on it, but apparently there's work out there. We've lost a few others that I think were extremely crucial to the organization. Nancy Brown, who I can't say enough about, and what she brought to the community and savings to the city over her, with her expertise and technical skills, but we're having, we're having a problem attracting new employees, and that's becoming a dangerous point. Budgetary concerns moving on, unfunded and underfunded items, i.e. the state of Wisconsin. They're great at passing legislation without interfacing with us and requiring us to do more, but not funding them. And that has been a problematic situation for way too long. Technology-related needs, there's different areas of the technology that need to be upgraded. Smaller equipment and improvements that do not fit under criteria CIP. In the 2014 CIP, you will notice that, I believe, the equipment purchases is down from four twenty-five to three seventy-five. We have very good equipment in the community, but there's, but there's also equipment that we need to purchase that could probably assist in making us more efficient. Once again, the demolition funds, that what you passed months ago was a one-time partial fix, because there's enough buildings out there to more than consume the hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer. I know several of us had discussions about this structure in this district, and we've got to get it down. And then there's the contingency for unexpected items. As you may recall, in the passage of the budget for the current year, we used to have a contingency fund of a quarter of a million.
That's unusual.
And we had to reduce that down to nothing because of the pressure that was put on that budget. So those are some of the concerns that will probably, hopefully, drive our conversation.
I kind of mentioned, I mentioned this earlier, that we can have as many meetings as you want, and you probably don't know how many meetings you want because you haven't been given any of the information yet, so we have a lot of information to get to the council for our first budget session on August twentieth, and that, we're required to give you comparisons of the previous year's actual, that's 2012, and then have six months of the current year, so you can compare that to the following year that, that we're seeking a budget for. And so we, you know, completed that during pretty much the month of, the month of July, and it's, the information will have everything from each division's line item by line item budgets, line by line revenue sources that we have, capital, the smaller capital items will be displayed, and then we'll have information on grants and donations, and the hotel motel tax, and how that money is spread out. Debt service, I'm sure there's something I'm missing, but we'll have, the budget packet will go to you for, for that meeting, and it'll be a week before August twentieth, so you'll have time to look at it. And if the council has any questions at this point after listening to this session, or things that came up as we made our presentation, and you want us to look into or report on, we're more than happy to make some notes and do our best to get that back to you by the twentieth.
Counselor Sweeney?
I'm a big benchmark guy, okay? And I'm wondering what communities would be our benchmarks, and what they are do, and I realize you can't, there's no one community exactly like another, I understand that. But there are similarities within communities. And my question is, number one, what, have you had conversations with, with them, and what are they doing to be innovative? Because it looks like this problem isn't going to go away in the next 2015, 16, 17, so we've got to be, try and be ahead of the game. So what are they doing, if anything? And what do our, the financials look from our benchmark, benchmarks? Are they doing anything, is there any, and I, probably there isn't, but is there? And maybe you've already gone through this, and I'm new, so I'm asking a question, but is there anything that we've overlooked? And I'm always a little leery, okay, if that's the proper word, and I don't mean to be, and I'll apologize in advance, but when somebody says, "We've cut everything as low as we can ever cut it," I'm always thinking, you know, there's always something that we can look at and continue to look at, and continue to look at, so, thank you.
Sure, good questions, counselor. Yes, we do, whether it's me or Assistant Directors Husky, or our internal auditor Bronson, quite often, we have to call other communities to see what they're doing on any number of issues. And then I'm involved with a group that's called the Urban Alliance, and it used to be called the Alliance of Cities. And we have conference calls every, oh, I don't know, probably once a month, where any of the finance directors, or the mayors, or city councilors, or city administrators can call in, and we, we kind of lament with each other about the difficulties that we're all going through. And I think, I get the definite sense that we're all kind of hitting this wall at the same time, because what I heard, and these are the words that came out of other people's mouths during the last conference call, "I don't have any more rabbits to pull out of the hat that, that come, that would solve issues of us not having to cut services." That's where everybody has gotten to. And so, I mean, I don't know specifics of communities, but I can think back over the years where some have gotten to the point where they had to reduce police and fire. Certainly, public works has been cut, certainly capital improvements have been cut. If somebody has a real wonderful idea of how to move through the next couple of years in a pain-free way, nobody's, nobody's mentioned it yet. And so you had asked about comparables, too. We, we've had some comparables that I think of that were used, for example, for salary studies to show where are we in alignment with other communities that are roughly our population, or maybe equalized value. I don't know that all these that I'm going to mention are necessarily, I mean, some of them are somewhat similar to us, but there's many communities that are very well-to-do as well. So, I mean, but some we use, like Manitowoc, Sheboygan, Wausau, La Crosse. Those are just, we've had like nine or 10, and those are the easiest ones. Eau Claire, but Eau Claire's been getting bigger and bigger, so they might not be on the list. And some of the things that I think some communities are resorting to are things that they never would have thought of touching before, and those are things like using reserves. And that's, when you, when you start talking about using your reserves, if it's to cover operating costs, that's a real, that's a big, huge step, and that's, in my opinion, kind of a desperate step. It's a step that you may take with the full knowledge that your bond rating agency is going to get real excited about that. And they're going to say, "You are, you're using your reserves for operating costs? How are you going to get by in the year after that, in the year after that, or when those reserves get down to a level that is too low?" Now, for us, what's very good, and earlier on in the evening, I mentioned that our, our rating agencies would call our reserves excellent. They are, they have built up. And in my opinion, I think they're at the point where we don't want to build them up more, because it isn't our intention to collect taxes, only to sit there and grow and grow, because then the citizens get very upset, justifiably. But if there comes a point where you look at those reserves and you say, "Well, here's a one-time, maybe it's an emergency situation, cost that you need to fix, or maybe it's a one-time cost, we took some reserves and used it for a neighborhood, community improvement for the demolition of some of the worst-shape homes." At least that way, you can push the pedal down and take it off within a planned method. But I, I know there are some communities that have used reserves. I'm very cautious about bringing that up, so.
It depends what the reserves are.
Depends on what the reserves are, and if you have excess, then it's, I don't think that would be a bad decision to use those, yeah.
Allow me to follow up on that, if I may. I'll give you the, the local comparison later, but the first, first comparison is, as you recall, under Governor McCallum, they were, the state was in a troubled situation budgetarily, so they took the tobacco settlement of, I forget how much it was, just to balance one biennial budget. It's a one-time revenue for a one-time expenditure, and then following up on that, Governor Doyle was in the same pickle. Now, there were two million, two and a half million in the red, and to solve that, he took three point five mil, three point, I'm talking about billion, I'm sorry, two billion, and then three point five billion out of the transportation fund, only to learn that it was federal money that had to be paid back. So ergo, the five point six trillion dollars that the state was in deficit for accomplishing one and a half or two biennial budgets solution with one-time expenditure availability. Turning to the local side and talking about comparisons between the municipalities, we're, we are an anomaly. The city is superior in two, two categories. We're the only city in the state of Wisconsin, I want to say that again, we're the only city in the state of Wisconsin that does not do special assessments. For sidewalks, curb and gutter, sewers, streets, bar none, we're the only one. So all of those expenditures are in the capital, I mean, in the general fund. When we, when we look at decreasing different things to balance the budget, that would be, I don't want to be the person that has to do this, but if you start eliminating the sidewalk improvement, street improvement, so forth, to balance a budget, that, that is gone, and you'll never recapture it. I just can't believe. Everything we've seen taken away in the past, we've never been, as Jean said, we've never been able to work it back in. The second thing is, as far as an anomaly to other municipalities in the state of Wisconsin, as we've discussed, we're the only one of two states, cities, or only one of two cities that own and operate a landfill. That is becoming, as we all know, an issue to be reckoned with. Fortunately for the city of Janesville... Fortunately for the city of Janesville, they do have a fee and so they're allowed to raise the fees. But unlike the city of Janesville, we have a very finite ability to attract revenue from our landfill where they have large population centers and large corporations. So those are the two anomalies that I can think of that kind of put us in an unusual position.
Mayor.
Counselor.
If I could ask Jean a question, when you talk about reserves, are you talking a dollar amount or are we talking a timeframe that if we quit putting any revenue into the city, how long could we run the city before going into a total deficit? Or is it a dollar amount?
Well, I don't know if I'll answer your question, or hopefully I will, counselor. We have a dollar amount of reserves in our general fund and there are many guidelines on what's an appropriate level of reserves. There, our auditors may have guidelines, the Government Finance Officers Association may have guidelines. And so, I'll give you an example. If we, if we had $1.5 million or $2 million or $3 million above and beyond what recommendations were for reserves, I mean, you don't want to go below a certain point in your reserves and if you choose to use those excess reserves on something, what I was saying before is that it should be something that you can pull back on it instead of having it a, an annual operating cost that you'll always have. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Yeah, you are. I just, I guess, what is the comfortable level then for reserves for a city with a $27 million budget?
Well, actually, I think what I would like to do is bring that back to you on August 20th and we can talk.
Okay.
Because, yeah, because we've had.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we've had the close of the 2012 audit and I think we should, I think we should look at that and I can bring back numbers for you at that time.
Very good. Thanks, Jean.
Okay.
Yes, I have, I have a much simpler question, I believe, and that's a, talking about the tax levy increase for 2014 and looking at about $34,000, what impact is that going to have on the individual taxpayer, on the individual property?
I can't tell you because I don't know what the tax rate will be.
How about August 20th?
I won't know it then either. And that's the, a huge frustration. It's a huge frustration on my part, on your part. And what we got the state to do was to give us that last piece of information, it's called the school tax credit. Instead of them giving it to us on November 29th, which they did last year, long after we had adopted our budget, they've, they've cut it 10 days shorter than that, so it's something like November 15th. Quite frankly, it doesn't help a whole lot because that's what, that's what we need. That's the last piece we need to be able to hit the button and see where the tax rate goes. I can tell you exactly where tax levy dollars will go for the city, but I can't tell you where they'll go for the school district or Douglas County or WITC until they go through their budgets and then a portion based on how much the city is in their taxing jurisdiction. So these are all things that, those, those levies from the other jurisdictions usually come rolling in in October. And what else do we need? We need our assessed values. We've just started to get what are called equalized values from the state just this last week. And the state uses those to allocate funds to all the municipalities on what's called an equal basis. But our assessed values, they, the state has a role in the manufacturing values in the community, real estate and personal property, and they don't get that to us until, for sure, mid-October and sometimes a little bit after that. And so those are key pieces that we need, we need to know the total assessed value, we need to know all the jurisdictions' tax levies, we need to know the school tax credit. And until we get all of those, we'll never know what the, the tax rate is. So I wish I could give you a very direct answer, but I can't until we get all those pieces. You're welcome.
Thanks for your indulgence and I'll bring it back to you on the 20th.
Item 7.2, Fire Chief Panger is requesting to renew the contract for regional hazardous materials response team services between the city of Superior and the Department of Military Affairs Division of Emergency Management from July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2015 for funding in the amount of $92,882.58 each year.
Motion to approve, second.
With the motion, second, discussion. Hearing on all, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to award the 2013 sewer televising services to Great Lakes Pipe Service for $51,535.07.
Move for approval.
Heard the motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to purchase screening equipment from Huber Technology for $339,778.
Motion to approve.
Heard the motion, second, approve, discussion. Counselor, Eric.
Yeah, Jeff, just one question, that, now this price doesn't, doesn't include installation, is that correct?
Yes, counsel, that is correct. It's exactly right. This is the equipment. This is the new set of screens for the wastewater plant. Do a couple of things, it's one of those projects we've been looking at for a while to improve the efficiency of the plant and get more throughput as far as the water that we can treat. And also, the screens we have are worn and letting some bigger particulate stuff through that they shouldn't be, and so it's, they are in need of replacement. Steve Roberts is here tonight and so is Mark Simmons, and maybe I'll have those two gentlemen just say a couple of things to address your point and a couple of other ones here.
Addressing the, the question about the installation not being included with this purchase, that is correct. And what we did is broke the bid into sort of two phases, the first one being the finalization of the equipment selection so that the design can, can be completed around that particular piece of equipment. Each of the different manufacturers has some nuanced differences and the design needs to incorporate those. So rather than having a construction bid with an uncertain piece of equipment, we wanted to get the equipment selection done first so that we can have a, a more accurate design for bidding of construction.
Okay, so this is new installation then versus you can't just go in and replace what you have now, it has to be totally redone, or?
The equipment that we have in there now is only capable of treating a total of about 13.7 million gallons and that's its rated capacity. Realistically, when we get above about 8 million gallons per day in flow rate through the facility, the screens become submerged. So we're switching from a rotomat-style rotating drum screen to a, a different style or a different technology that has replaced that as an industry standard. So we're going to a much more effective technology that also has a much higher throughput capacity, so it's, it's a better installation and a much better fit for our need.
Okay. You have any idea at this point, how much it would probably cost?
You're talking about the installation?
Yes, of the new screens, yeah.
The, the estimate for the total project, I think, was in the $800,000 range, and so what we'll be doing is bidding the installation of this equipment with some other tankage improvements for optimization of the main plant that'll be coming later this year. We intentionally delayed the schedule of this bid so that we can use money from both the 2013 and 2014 allocation for our annual capital improvements to cover the two pieces that we have on the installation for the screens.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is recommending an advisory group be formed, the Rental Property Study Committee, to study and provide recommendations to the mayor and the common council with regard to establishing minimum standards and criteria appropriate for occupancy of rental property within the city.
Heard the motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 10.1 is a resolution of the city of Superior accepting a street and utility easement in connection with property located in East End.
Heard the motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Item 11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Safety Committee repealing and recreating City Code Chapter 54, Article 3, Smoke Detectors.
What is the pleasure?
Motion to approve, second.
Heard the motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.2, An Ordinance Introduced by Finance Director Vito Amending Certain Sections of Chapter 2, Article 5, Budget Systems of the City Code of Ordinances.
Heard the motion, second. Discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would ask that the motioner and the second consider an amendment to some language. Section 2-237, Submission of Proposed Budget. In the description here, we've gotten rid of the word appropriation ordinance to go to, and it says budget. I would like to see the word one-year budget so that it's a little more distinguished as to, we are using a one-year budget rather than just the word budget. So the other part that is crossed out, two lines down would be where it says two-year and it says budget to include the word one-year. One line down below that, the proposed budget, be changed to the proposed one-year budget. Section 2-239, third line down, adopted yearly budget, or that yearly budget when changed. And at the bottom, 2.240, that we include the word in the second line, proposed one-year budget. That makes it very distinctive that it is a one-year budget and not just a budget. And I would ask those folks to amend their motion.
I would. I agree.
Yeah, okay, I'll amend that, too.
The motioner and second agree to the amendment. First pool will vote on the amendment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carry. Now, we'll move on the actual motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Heard the motion, second, to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Item 11.3, An Ordinance Introduced by Police Chief Legess and City Attorney Perrell Amending City Code Chapter 74, Article 11, Synthetic Drug Establishments.
What is the pleasure?
Second.
Heard the motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.4 is an ordinance introduced by Police Chief Legess and City Attorney Perrell Amending City Code Chapter 86, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Adding Section 86-26D Penalty.
Heard the motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.5, An Ordinance Introduced by Police Chief Legess and City Attorney Perrell Amending City Code Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1.14, Citations and Deposits for Violations of Certain Provisions, Listing of Sections Enforcable by Citation.
Heard the motion, second, to approve. Discussion, hearing on all, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any business by the public? Will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Director Kane.
Mr. Adjourn.